I am.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Findlay City Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Harrington, can you call the roll?
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Iyer?
Here.
Mr. Aldridge?
Here.
Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Dr. Seabornall Wilson?
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, tonight's safety briefing is the same as every night. Out the door, to the left, we have to get out of here pretty quick. Other than that, I think we have Glenwood Middle School for the welcome today.
Let's do the welcome from Glenwood first, yeah.
We are the Cool Beans Coffee Cart from Glenwood, so we're gonna tell you a little bit about ourselves, but we got started because the high school does one. So to help these students with their transition, we started one at Glenwood.
We are students from attendance class at Glenwood Middle School that work on filling orders of snacks and drinks for Glenwood teachers.
So we get snacks and orders that come in from Glenwood teachers, and these students work on filling those orders.
Nice.
Yeah, so we have a lot of different options for teachers to pick from, again, all filled by the students.
Alright, so we do this because it helps the students learn a lot of skills. We work on different job skills, transition skills, the packaging of the treats. We're even working on finding other skills. It helps, it meets a lot of their IEP goals and it helps with our curriculum as well. They work on following directions, building orders, they're the ones that add up everybody's totals, do the math all day.
And then with the money, we have actually sent the money to purchase a communication board here in town for Miracle Park Playground. And we also have purchased sensory room items for the students.
And then we have raised, could I tell this from the playroom, the communication boards at Miracle Park in Findlay?
So you can see in that picture, that was the board we were able to donate. So that is actually located at Miracle Park Playground here in Findlay for the community to use.
Alright, so as the students focus often in their work, just now we focus on different jobs. So they have been working on being creators, cooks, cashiers, servers, different cleaning jobs. And believe it or not, the cleaning is their favorite part and they will buy them over lunch.
And then you can see, no, can you come over here and explain? So you can see on there that they have paychecks, so they fill out time sheets and get paychecks. With their paychecks. So we have a little store in the classroom that they can then use their money that they get from their paychecks to buy things for themselves. So we have, as you can see, most of our students use communication devices to help support their communication. And with the help of the librarian at Glenwood, we were able to complete an activity with all Glenwood students. They had to use a communication board and communicate back and forth with peers. So they were able to experience what some of these students experience as far as having to find the picture that you want to say. I was gonna say, I can't really, you can't really tell on that picture, but I did not give them a lot of choices, so they had to get creative. So learning that maybe that icon that they wanted to say wasn't necessarily there and what to do to problems, all that. So just to experience a little bit.
Hi, everybody, I'm Erica Cobb, I am the very proud principal at Glenwood Middle School. I'm not going to go through and read all of these testimonials, but I'm just gonna read a couple. So from this slide, our nurse, Ms. Ingolston, she said, "I am the nurse at Glenwood Middle School. I cannot express enough what joy Cool Beans brings to our students and staff. I've personally noted so much growth in the students participating related to language and math. I've been so impressed with their manners, comfort with communication, and genuine pride in their work. I will continue to purchase Cool Beans offerings because my heart truly smiles when I see our students heading for the clinic each week. It is always a highlight of the day that I'm thankful for." On the next slide to highlight, sixth grade social studies teacher, Mrs. Buck. "I always look forward to my Cool Beans delivery on Wednesdays. Not only do I get to have good snacks and drinks, I get to be visited by the students behind it all. They are wonderful Trojans that put sweet touches on the purchases, like a free friendship bracelet or decorative coloring sheet attached to the snack. The students are learning about customer service, making change, and making my day." On the next slide, a robotics and design and modeling teacher, Mr. Kin. "The Glenwood Cool Beans cart has been a welcome tree each week and provides students an opportunity to work collaboratively and enhance life skills that they will carry with them well beyond their time at Glenwood. In addition to all the benefits for the kids running the cart, it positively impacts so much more as my preschool-aged children greatly enjoy them each week, and I am routinely greeted with, 'Is it snack day from your school?' when I pick them up each afternoon. The Cool Beans cart is a treat for all of us. Despite how chaotic a day can become, the smiles from our kids each week is certainly a worthwhile investment." And then on the last slide, from our eighth grade science and social studies teacher, Mrs. Moser. "Cool Beans is a bright spot in my week. It brings me so much joy. I love what this is teaching all students in our building. When the Cool Beans crew comes to my class, all of my students pause, and we have such wonderful and positive interactions together. High fives and jokes are exchanged, and there are smiles on every face. Cool Beans is so much more than a learning opportunity, it's a difference maker." So if you are ever around Glenwood on a Wednesday, please let us know because our students will definitely treat you to the Cool Beans cart. And actually, tonight they have snacks that they brought to give to all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would thank you for moving, moving those so everyone can enjoy them.
While they're doing that, Board of Education, any questions or comments for the Cool Beans?
Thank you so much.
So, so it's a Wednesday, it's a Wednesday thing? And is it, is it most of the day that this happens, or just in the mornings, or what's your timing usually?
Well, on Mondays and Tuesdays, you can spend the mornings making and packaging the treats. And then, uh, pre-creating on Wednesdays.
Are the students involved in the pricing of the items as well? Do you talk about that?
Yes, we talk about how much the items cost.
Cost, and then?
Some weeks we can do, some are when you do a Walmart order.
Okay, nice. So, so you're kinda going over like cost of goods sold and, and then, and then margin, and then how to price it so that your product actually is, is economically, is economically viable? Oh yes, thank you, okay.
Yeah, so much. Oh my goodness, yes, these look wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, don't blame her, look, those look so good.
No diving during the meetings.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I was gonna say, I want people to get some on the way out.
Thank you, that would be a great snack. Thank you so much, I know your dad. Your dad's crazy. I went a little, I bought a little too much.
Is it something different? Is it the same thing? Okay, why don't, why don't we take those out? Thank you, why don't we take those out and let everybody else have some? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Set them by the doors.
Yeah, set them by the door. Yeah, grab them on the way out.
That was a big deal because there was no school today, so they had to, you know.
So is, are they doing the PTO next?
Well, that's under my.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Cobb. Appreciate it. Um, we're gonna move on to adopt tonight's proposed agenda, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Seabornall Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Superintendent reports the celebrations.
Alright, starting off with celebrations, I do wanna again thank the Cool Beans for being here tonight. And I think that this is a perfect example of academic excellence, our diverse opportunities and true belonging in our schools. This is a great example of inclusion, this is a great example of equity in our schools put on display at this incredible welcome tonight. So again, I wanted to acknowledge that and celebrate that. I think maybe I'm gonna take some of these out of order on the agenda, but in keeping with the theme of Glenwood, we do, we've been highlighting our district support organizations. And so under the celebrations tonight, I would love to invite up the Glenwood PTO to talk a little bit about what they do.
Alright, so we wanna start off tonight with reading off our mission. And the mission of the Glenwood Middle School PTO is to foster supportive and inclusive community that will enhance the educational experience of all the students. We're committed to strengthening the partnership between parents, teachers, and staff through open communication, volunteerism, and fundraising. And our goal is to enrich the school environment, support academic excellence, and promote well-being and school spirit.
Some of the stuff that we've done this year to raise our little fundraisers. Um, in September, we did Texas Roadhouse Night. Um, October was Movie Night, where we've had a film at the school where students could come watch a film and buy snacks. Um, November was Spirit Ware. Um, December and in April, we had school dances. Um, Dollar Donuts in January, we had a spaghetti dinner in February, the night Chipotle night, April, and then Hostel Flower Sale coming up here in May.
Also, we're supporting our teachers and students by supplying, by having them supplemental classroom supplies, by giving them the technology, the bookshelves, the end of quarter rewards for students, and registration of competitions, field trip transportation costs, and student tickets for MPAC performance.
Great, well, thank, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. There it is, okay. Thank you.
Well, certainly, yeah, thank you very much for being here, thanks for all you do. We know that we cannot do it without our amazing district support organization. So thank you for everything you've done at Glenwood Middle School this year, thank you so much. Alright, one of the celebrations got moved to next month. We had a, the We the People commendation is gonna be next month. Unfortunately, Representative Matthews had to push, so we're gonna get that done next month. I just wanted to note that on your agendas. Next, I would like to invite up a very accomplished student. It is an extreme accomplishment to be asked to participate with the Toledo Symphony Orchestra. And we had a young artist win that competition. So I would like to, at this time, invite up Isaac Weiss and Mr. Ken Pressle up front for this amazing commendation by our Board of Education. Sure. Well, as we're coming up, in your words, I need you to stand behind the mic, you probably aren't ready for this. You are incredible at what you do, right? You are in FFE. You're in FFE, you're a main player in our musicals, and what instrument do you play?
The violin.
The violin, tell us a little bit about what you had to go through to earn this honor and what it was like to have this experience.
Well, uh, this was my fourth time competing in this competition. And I, I didn't know if I was gonna keep doing it, but my teacher strongly encouraged me to go for it. Um, and, and through it, I just gained a lot of experience about myself as a performer. Um, the performance especially was just, it was such a fun experience. I, it felt like I was moved, um, uh, being in front of the orchestra uh, with these professionals that I've looked up to my whole life. Um, it was a huge accomplishment for me.
So how nervous were you?
I was, I was terrified. This is one of, this is one of the most nervous performances I've ever had, but, um, you know, I just, I thought about it with the mindset of going up there and having fun, and, and that's what I did, so.
So what, what piece did you play?
I, I played the Mendelssohn Violin Concerto, uh, the third movement.
From Opus sixty-four?
Yes.
I Googled that after I saw it in the paper. I recommend everybody Google that, it will blow your mind. So the fact that I, I would, I would love to see a video of you playing it, but I found plenty of them online, other people playing them. That piece is incredibly difficult, and it is amazing, so congratulations, it's fantastic.
And before we get to the commendation, I would like to ask Mr. Pressle, we, I wanna congratulate you and thank you for all that you do. We know that we have amazingly talented students in our district as evidenced by our welcome and by this amazing performance right here. However, we also know and honor and acknowledge that the conditions are set, and the conditions are set in the classroom. What, what's it been like to teach this young man, and just, just say a few words here?
Well, he's, he's such a talent, and I feel blessed to have had, the number of years that I've had, we've worked together since eighth grade, and he's always been a very, you know, outgoing, as you could tell from his, his stage performances, I mean, he's also an actor. Uh, he dances, he sings, and he plays the violin, which is, the violin is one of the hardest instruments to learn how to play, and for him to be able to compete amongst other artists and to win the Toledo Concerto competition was very exciting for me, and I enjoyed watching him perform. It was, it was quite an experience. And I'm looking forward to next year, his senior year, because we're gonna, we've already been talking about how I'm gonna, we're gonna feature him in our final spring concert, and we've already talked about the concerto that he's gonna be playing, the Lalo Symphony Espanol, which, which we'll talk about more, but, uh, so I just told him, I said, hey, we'll do that. And he's very talented, and I feel blessed to have him part of our orchestra program, so congratulations.
Well, Mr., yeah, let's give him a round of applause. We so appreciate the conditions that you set as a teacher and for the art that you both bring into our spaces and into this world. And so at this time, that's why we're gonna have Mr. Cooper read a commendation, and then we're all gonna come up and take a photo together.
It may be nervous, I'm right. Alright, Mr. Weiss, uh, the Findlay City Schools Board of Education proudly commends Isaac Weiss for his outstanding achievement as the winner of the prestigious 2025 Toledo Symphony Orchestra Young Artist Competition. Isaac's dedication and exceptional talent have culminated in this remarkable accomplishment, placing him among the most accomplished young musicians in the region and leading to an opportunity to perform with the esteemed Toledo Symphony Orchestra on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at the Toledo Museum of Art. Isaac's performance showcased not only his immense skill, but also his profound musical insight and passion. His commitment to his art is evident in his numerous achievements, serving as co-concertmaster of the Findlay High School Symphony Strings, enriching our community through performances as a proud member of the Findlay String Factor Ensemble, a three-time representative in the Ohio Music Education Association's All-State Orchestra, and a member of the OMEA Northwest Regional Orchestra. Beyond his technical mastery, Isaac's musicianship is distinguished by a deep understanding of music's emotional power, allowing him to connect with audiences and foster unity. Whether as a soloist or an integral part of an orchestra, Isaac embodies excellence, dedication, and true artistry. Therefore, on the twenty-first day of April, twenty twenty-five, the Findlay City Schools Board of Education hereby recognizes and celebrates Isaac, Isaac Weiss's unwavering talent and outstanding musical achievements. Congratulations, buddy.
Another standing ovation?
And we're gonna have board members on either side?
And then you can say something to come down.
Yeah, there we go. Wanna make sure Dad gets a picture, do you wanna, do you get a photo? Oh, we're not done, whoa, hey, oh, oh, we're not done.
Alright, thank you very much, I'll go ahead and shift into the, I have a very brief report for the Board of Education tonight, one of the things that you'll be taking up later in your agenda, just wanna highlight, uh, as you know, we've had to adjust some of those start and end times throughout the district as we prepare, uh, for the potential changes to our, our transportation for next year. So just wanted to highlight in this report that the preschool's start and end times will, the AM classes will begin at nine AM, conclude at eleven forty-five, and that the PM classes will go from twelve thirty to three thirty. One of the things also, we will not have any all-day options at our preschool next year, and that's mainly due to, we are so amazing at that five-star preschool that we are just, the enrollment continues to explode. And so we, to create, make sure that we continue to have the capacity to serve as many students as possible, we will be having only the half-day options next year. Just as a, I wanted to just review briefly, thank, I wanted to thank the Board of Education very much for the work session last week, and for all your, your hard work diving into several topics. For those either in attendance here or watching on YouTube, if you did not have a chance, you can go back and, uh, watch the Board's work sessions, session from last Thursday, where we had, um, talked through the potential in our school district for activity fees or what is sometimes commonly called to pay to participate. I really wanted to thank the Board of Education for all of the feedback. We're gonna be working with the team on some of the adjustments out of the first iteration, the first prototype there. Thank you for kind of wrestling through, you know, moving into next year, given a lot of the tough decisions that we have, one of them would be, what do we do with external donations? Especially when we wanna be mindful of that equity across all of our extracurricular programs. And thank you for talking through, uh, you know, the potential challenges with the, the pending changes to transportation, because we know that that one, you know, um, once that comes up for a vote is gonna be very challenging, um, for everyone. So just wanted to thank everyone for their, their, their hard work last week. I wanted to just wrap up with a little gratitude in my report, uh, this evening. I wanna, uh, close with gratitude to each of you for advocating for our kids, our school district and our community by placing us right back on the ballot and driving the clarity around why we are on the ballot, which is, uh, May sixth, it's only fifteen days away. I also wanna thank so many who have helped myself and Pam Harrington get out there and share the facts once again with our community, from fireside chats to the Chamber of Commerce and Alliance Board, from St. Michael's to the Children's Mentoring Connection Board, from two incredibly well-attended, uh, town halls. Um, I wanna thank Glenwood and Danelle for hosting those, to the Findlay Area Human Resources Association, and so many more. I've left out so many in the last several months since January. But I just wanna thank everyone for allowing us the space to share the facts. And, you know, we're not done, we're gonna continue to share that it's been twenty years since we've had a voter-approved increase to our operating budget. We're gonna continue to share that our state legislature is currently proposing an end to the Fair School Funding Formula implementation, we're keeping a close eye on that unknown. We're also gonna continue to share that sadly, we are in the process of cutting six million out of our operating budget for next year. And then, of course, we are gonna continue to share that our amazing community is at this crossroads right now in deciding what school district we wanna be for our kids. So again, I just wanna thank the Board of Education for all of your hard work since January on that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Treasure celebrations and donations.
So I won't repeat everything that Dr. Hatton just said, but I concur. I am very, it's how proud I am to work in a community where there's such good support and, um, ongoing support all the time for our kids. So at this point in time, though, I do wanna go over our treasure celebration and donations. Every time I read these, it seems like the list gets longer, and they are up on the screen if you wanna take a look, because sometimes I'm not the, I'm a great numbers person, but not always the best in pronunciation. So, I wanna start with the top, Deetzes, we'd like to thank Deetzes and Visit Findlay, Findlay North End PTO. Dietz's, we'd like to thank Dietz's and Visit Finley, Finley North End PTO, um, Alexandria's, right, Rachel Spear, Jeanette Company, Kylie Essinger, and then we had a couple of grants, visit, grant, the grantor, Visit Finley, and then also the Community Foundation. And again, without all these, uh, the continued support every, every board meeting, I'm always amazed that the list is always long, always long, and we are so grateful. And without, without this support, you know, um, it would just, it, it's just, I, I think the things that we get to do with these funds are amazing and gives our kids such an opportunity. So again, I'd like to thank them, and if you see any of them, tell them thank you for their support.
Mrs. Harrington, can I jump in on?
You sure can.
Congrat, uh, thank you on that. You, is that the Jeanette Company?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right.
Je, I think that's right. Isn't it?
That company in the center of the screen there, Genite Company.
I think it's Genite.
I just wanted to say that, so there's an adaptive swing on that playground, right? Which is about equity. So our children can go out to recess and have fun, just like their peers. And if you're, um, they, they're helping to construct a, a wheelchair accessible path to get to the swing, right? And so I think, again, it's a perfect example of making sure that we have access so that I can play out on the playground, just like my friends. That's an example of equity, and I just really wanted to, uh, particularly highlight that one and thank them for that support.
I think that's all I have.
All right.
For donations, not for finances, but we'll do that a little bit later.
All right. Moving on to board reports and celebrations.
I, I can kick it off. Okay. I've got one item, uh, to update here, um, and it's from, uh, Mrs. Baumann at Whittier. Um, Mrs. Cobb has already provided hers and, um, you did such an amazing job. It's hard to follow that up, but, uh, I'm gonna try. Yeah. So, uh, Mrs. Baumann at, uh, Whittier would like to celebrate, uh, "We're thrilled to share that our recent One School, One Book Family Event was a huge success with over a hundred fam, families in attendance. The evening was filled with excitement as students and families engaged in book-themed trivia, enjoyed interactive games and activities designed to promote synergy and celebrate their love of reading together. As part of the fun, participants earned books from our, um, school's book vending machine as prizes, fostering, uh, both excitement and ownership over reading. Uh, we are incredibly grateful for the Community Foundation, for their generous support and funding of both the, the One School Program and One Book Program, and the books in the vending machine as well. Uh, their partnership helps us bring joy of literacy to life at Whittier for the students and families." So that is all.
Uh-huh. Yep. Uh, speaking of our amazing preschool, Jackie Nelson does an outstanding job of, um, being the director of our preschool, and she sent me some notes here. It's Jackie Nelson from the preschool, and here are the celebrations. "We held our second annual passport to Play Night in March. Over a hundred and fifty students and families came to celebrate the play by participating in activities for Fine Motor, Ghost Motor, reading, science, and math. It was a great time had by all. Lots of glitter all over the building. Um, uh, we love, about seventeen elves, love glitter at preschool." And then, uh, just a note, side note, uh, "We are in the midst of our ABC Countdown and have such fun activities planned as goats, a Trojan Trot Mini Marathon, magic, and a prom." So we want to thank Jackie and all of her staff and the students. And then I have a couple of things from, actually Pam, uh, Hamlin's here with us, the director of Millstream, and it just makes me so excited, um, to see everything that's happening there. But, um, curate education really is taking off. Um, it, uh, just really statewide, a lot of support. Uh, really happy to, uh, find out that our new Lieutenant Governor, um, Tressel, as a matter of fact, that, um, he's, he's really understanding it and supporting it as well. Um, I really enjoy when John Yusup would come by and he always made time for us, I think, here. So anyways, I wanted to tell you, Pam said that applications were up, and next year we will be up approximately two hundred students and over a hundred on a waitlist. So people want to go to Millstream, and I think that's a lot in part due to the director, the assistant director, staff, um, the students, just everyone over there. When you walk in there, it's just a happy place. So congratulations, and please share that with your staff, Pam.
Yes. Um, I have some Bigelow Hill, Northview. Um, they want to celebrate the action team that's put together the Clothen Trojan Five K that's coming up on Sunday, April twenty-seventh, at Bigelow Hill. This fundraiser raises money for Clothe the Child. Northview has been collaborating with Bigelow Hill, and they are taking on the raffle baskets for the Five K this year. Thank you to everybody from both buildings that work so hard to make this a success and raise money for Clothe the Child. And there are a lot of baskets out there. Um, take a look if you get a chance, because I'm sure something will interest you. And then my celebrations are, I have attended, or I attended all three nights at the, of the Big Shake at Chick-fil-A. So had some great dinners every night and, uh, which was fine with me, no cooking. So great group of kids, Chick-fil-A, um, have great mentors that are with them, and thanks to all the volunteers for that, but especially to Paul Hattie for supporting this program. Um, and then I attended the Finley Indoor Drum Line Drumstick Dinner and Show, and they, I want to congratulate them as, uh, state champions, and their director, Danny Saunders, was the Director of the Year. So a big congratulations to that group. And I am still on my tour of lunches. I'm trying out all the food we serve to our kids, and, uh, I'm keeping a few notes on these little adventures, so maybe more to share later. Thanks.
At Jefferson, on April the fourth, um, they celebrated National, uh, School Librarian Day with a special thanks to Mrs. Casata for her commitment to our lifelong readers and leaders and inspiring our students each and every day. On April eighth, uh, Jefferson celebrated with over fifty of their dads, uncles, grandfathers, and their village of men who positively impacted the development and improved the outcomes of their early learners. And not to be outdone, on April the fifteenth, they celebrated with their magnificent moms, because, you know, that's the heart of the house. So had a great time, great time this month so far at Jefferson. Chamberlain Hill, lots of pictures of the Big Shake, lots of pictures of the Big Shake competition. And Principal Zachuski writes that our students have worked hard to develop essential soft skills like professional conversation, handshaking, and confidence in the real-world interactions. So honestly, it doesn't really matter who wins. I think they all win, um, in the Big Shake competitions, and the community members that participate, I know, all get a really big, um, bang out of participating in it as well. And, uh, unfortunately, it looks like April showers is also gonna bring state testing, um, to our friends across the district. Chamberlain Hill had that in their notes, um, you know, bringing your best every day to school is very important, um, for state testing. Uh, Donnell celebrated their honor roll students for the third nine weeks. Lots of kids up there, um, great to see. They also celebrated National School Librarian Day with their spotlight on their librarian, Mrs. Brooks, with a big thank you to her for her dedication and care of their students. And on April sixteenth, the middle school track season officially kicked off with a victory over Van Buren. Go Trojans. It would be nice if the weather would cooperate so we could have more of our, our spring sports, but it looks like most of them are kicking off well. So that's it.
All right. Uh, Dr. Steven Alar Wilson took some of mine for the preschool and, um,
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Uh, we have the same ones, so.
Yes, we do. We share.
I did want to celebrate that spring sports are off and running out on the fields. Uh, Mrs. Cobb, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how old's your daughter? She's twelve, and she's playing back there right now, correct? So even our youth, uh, are utilizing our fields back there, even though it hasn't, spring hasn't cooperated. Uh, we have moved some games to Finley, uh, because we do have access to the fields back there with the turf. Um, some, uh, places that we play did, were not able to accommodate us with the rain, so they ended up moving some, some games here. And then obviously, uh, it was back there before the meeting and, um, watching softball, and then, uh, the youth team is using the other field right now and also been out there when every single field out there was in use. Uh, it's pretty amazing to see. I actually went to the top of the, uh, soccer bleachers to kind of look over the entire complex. Uh, I will say, if you do go out there when all the fields are in use, please watch for foul balls. Um, they kind of go all over the place, and our softball team, girl softball team, is really good this year, and they can hit a lot of balls over the fence. Uh, and some of them went onto the lacrosse field a couple of times while the boys were playing. So, uh, pretty amazing out there to see everybody, um, participating and competing and really thankful we have that facility. Uh, and then, not to hash, rehash out what, uh, Dr. Hatton said, but super appreciative of everybody in the community that's supporting the school, seeing lots of signs. Uh, Danielle Perkins is here, and, uh, we graduated together, so I'm glad to see her as part of the Levy Committee this year. But we really need the community's, uh, support on May sixth and just urging the community to get out and vote for Finley City Schools. That's all I got. Committee reports.
Okay. Um, before I dive into committee reports. I do. I'm sta, staring at these delicious cookies and this salty snack, and I forgot to let the cool beans know that you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but if you would like to go celebrate your presentation with your family at this time, you can go do that. Or you can stay for the whole meeting, but you're welcome to leave. No problem. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Okay, as, uh, we take a look at superintendent committees for this past month, obviously, as always, the Finance Committee met, dove into a lot that will be covered under Mrs. Harrington's report.
Yep.
Operations and facilities, the main update, of course, is from the amazing expansion project, uh, next door at Millstream, and we've got, floors are being poured, external masonry almost done. Am I missing anything else?
No, this week is the big week of the floors. We're excited.
Yep. Yep. I happen to be out, um, I'm taking my office hours into the community, as you all know, and last week I was at Panera, and I ran into an entire table of retired Finley Trojan teachers and secretaries and, and they had so many questions about that amazing project. As we know, it's grant-funded, but they were just so excited about the growth there and the opportunities there for kids. So that, that is really catching the attention of this community as it should. Personnel and HR did meet. Um, I've recommended that we, because there's so many details around that connected to the difficult decisions that we're gonna be taking up in May and June, that we're gonna be covering that in executive session under privileged communication. Policy Committee met. Thank you, Mr. Aldrich. Small but mighty policy team. Board, you have in front of you, uh, kind of a, you have all the, access to all the policies, but you also have a little bit of a cheat sheet highlighted in yellow. Most of these are very relatively basic, uh, adoptions that I'll be asking for next month. These are just first reads. Uh, for example, there's a new, uh, thing on board committees. We don't have board committees. We have superintendent committees. Um, release time for Elizabeth's instruction is giving some optional language around, um, doing background checks for those that come to pick up the kids. Uh, Mr. Aldrich and I are recommending that we do not adopt that language. We want to keep that with those entities and stay separate from those, which is the original spirit and I think intent of the law. We are following the law, of course. Um, there are some new, uh, expanded rules around student expulsion that superintendents across the state will have. You might want to read that carefully. Um, the main, one of the things that stands out is that if, uh, a superintendent can now extend expulsions, um, if they, they believe, uh, through a hearing process that there has not been reasonable rehabilitation. Um, also for, they've expanded the definition around threats to a school campus and making an unsafe environment. But the other thing that I actually appreciated seeing in some of this language was what, what we are already out ahead on, which is the restor, the restoration of that student, the wrapping around of that student and that family, um, to rehabilitate, make better choices, and, and, um, restore within that young individual a better way forward so that they can return to our campuses safely. Um, let's see, you're gonna see a few more, just some tweaks around administering medicines to students in school, which we've been doing that in the past. School board meetings, you can't be remote. That's kind of a new update. None of us are typically. Um, and then the, the remainder there are just, uh, just some minor tweaks to language. Um, College Credit Plus, they've expanded when students can declare for that from once a year to twice a year, because sometimes college courses are only one semester. So that makes a lot of sense. Um, so those are the question, those are the, the updates that you'll see around policy. No votes tonight, just first reads.
So is, is the language that we're seeing in there right now what you're recommending for us to accept?
Correct. Yeah. The, I believe it's the, the new proposed language is in green. The strikeouts or anything previous would be struck out in red.
Okay.
Yep.
But there's, okay. So what we're reading is what we're gonna be voting on, and
Yep.
All the language that's in there right now, all of that is part of the options. You've kind of gone through the options that the OSBA recommended?
Mm-hmm.
And, and of that decided what?
Yeah.
What the committee thought was best to recommend and forward.
And usually, we just adopt what they're recommending, because some of it is just literally lifted from statute.
Right.
So, yeah.
But where there's options, you've, you've made those decisions.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's what we're seeing.
I, I am, there are a couple of policies, yes, that, this is a good point. Um, I'm waiting to hear back from two people on my team just for some specifics that we need to fill in for local context. And I'll get those to you. Before the next meeting.
I, just for the, the folks that might be interested in this and watching online, the one about attending board meetings, that, that's kind of gone through a life cycle now, because during COVID, we were able to attend board meetings, um, virtually, and we were able to speak, participate, speak, and vote. Okay? And then there, then after that period of time, they were, they moved it to where we, or changed it so that we could, um, participate and speak, but we couldn't vote. And so now this is, I would say, the final step where our board can no longer participate virtually at all. Okay? So in order to be at the board meeting, you need to physically be at the board meeting in order to speak, participate, and vote, is what the, the policy reads now.
Correct. It's, it's almost, I would say, not almost, but it is reverting back to pre-two thousand twenty.
Yep.
And so
That's right.
All the rules that were in place before are going back.
And then there's another question I had on, um, policy E D E. It's the Computer Online Services. I'll tell you, I can read, but Katie, I'm sorry, I'm not comprehending. So it's like, we got, I just, I thought of you when I was reading this. I'm reading the words, but I am not comprehending what I'm reading. So, so could you help me understand what they're talking about, technology provider in there? I mean, I, maybe like offline afterwards, kind of review that a little bit, because it's very confusing in there.
It's pretty technical.
Yeah. It's very confusing.
I gotta go, yeah, I gotta go back and double-check that one, because Justin signed off on it, because I thought it was just a minor change. The bigger changes occurred last fall.
Okay.
Coming into this school year, there was a massive overhaul in what we would have to report to parents with.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
This one, though, was a very minor, minor, but I gotta, I can get a, a talking point to the whole board and, and get it out to you. Yeah.
Yeah, and I would agree, Dr. Hatton, but when you read through the whole, the whole piece, it gets very technical and it can be confusing. But like Dr. Hatton said, the, the major piece was last fall. This is just some minor tweaks.
Okay. So does this, does what's in there right now cause us any heartburn?
No, not at all. In the fall, it was more the triggering for the, the number of contacts we were gonna have to do with families.
Yes.
Um, we are all about the transparency around, here are the products we use, here are the parent companies, here are the pri, you know, we, we go through all the different privacy checks, and we have to now annually put that out there. Um, they did a major revision in the law so that it didn't trigger so many responses, because I don't think legislators understood our day-to-day, you know, what that would do to us, and then they got rid of all of that. Honestly, this particular one, I just had Justin read it. He had no heartburn over it, um, but I can circle back to it. I, I felt like it was relatively minor, but I'll go back to it.
Agreed.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, it, there's, there's not a lot of paraphrasing in here, so maybe paraphrase what the
Sure.
Changes mean to us.
No problem.
And, um, so I, help me on a little bit on that one. But other than that, I, I thought the changes were good. I like the additional language to the expulsion, um, policy. I think that's, that's helpful.
I think the main, the main concern I have on that one moving forward is just that I would want a Board of Education to really be mindful of a superintendent not indefinitely expelling a student without good cause. I mean, that, that, you know, I think it's from the Spider-Man movie with great responsibility, or power comes great responsibility. I mean, that's a significant power that, um, you know, because I believe in the, the right to a public education, so, um, it would have to be significant. And I don't think that we have superintendents across the state, you know, wielding that inappropriately, but it does really expand it, along with restorative practices, which, again, I'm very proud that we're out ahead on that, so. Okay. And then, um, under teaching and learning, the, the committee met, and, um, if you have any questions about the student school fees that you will be taking a look at, um, Mrs. Abbott is here to answer any of those questions. Do you have any update, just in general, talking points around that?
Just in general, when you take a look at the elementary, you'll see that the academic and technology fee is still the same at $68, $25 of that is technology, the 43 would be the academic side. From the middle school, it's the same, academic would be 60, 25 for technology for combined, 75. We do have fees for choir, band, orchestra and then art one at the middle school, and then down in the high school, you'll see each of our courses listed, so our first description guide this year for the high school aligned a lot of our courses, and so the fees then needed to be aligned to the courses that we are operating for this upcoming school year. So, you will see all of those listed in the chart.
And as they're taking a look at that, and I know significant can be a subjective term, were there any significant increases to school fees or increases, period?
There were not significant, there were some pieces in order to align, make sure that the novel purchasing is happening in the English department systematically at the high school level. There were a couple of decreases specifically to one of our world languages, but no significant changes for this upcoming school year. We are still wrestling with the fact that we don't know our budgets, as Dr. Hatton shared earlier, that we're still waiting to hear what that looks like from the state level, so these fees are where we are at this point in time to ensure that we can provide our students the academic excellence in which they deserve.
Can I, thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Hatton, can I go back to the policies for a minute, because I did have a question about?
Oh, sure, yeah.
On, it looks like we have a new policy, it's the Students in Foster Care policy?
Yes.
And that's brand new? And, so, one, I just want to make clear, I support having a policy around this, but I'm very curious about, we have to designate a foster care education liaison, and who, and this is a, this is a pretty big job description, okay, so, reading through it? So, who is that going to be?
So, we've always had this, we just haven't had it in policy.
Oh.
So, every school district has a designated, by law, not only McKinney-Vento, which is homeless liaison, but also foster care liaison, and that is for when there are, the technical term is dispute or dispute resolution, so let's say, we have a child in foster care here in Finley being served here and hosted in a family here, and then, for whatever reason, whether it's respite care, an emergency displacement, something like that, and they are now placed in Arcadia. By law, you need to go, to minimize the disruption for that child, the two districts need to get together, and by default, we would want to keep that student in our schools with the teachers they know and the counselors they know and so forth, and so, the designees from each district get together and we work out transportation and just how we're going to handle that. We've been doing that for a long time, and I appreciate you pointing this one out, we went through a state-level review, and I'm looking at our designee, who is our Director of Student Services, Stephanie Renn, and they noted, they kind of gave us a little like, well, you're supposed to have a policy around it, even though they know we've been doing this. Am I leaving, am I basically getting this straight?
That's correct.
Okay, so Stephanie worked with OSBA to just put language around that which is already in statute and what we've been doing, it's just memorializing this in policy. I should have highlighted that one.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that falls under Student Services.
Yep.
Yep, thanks. And so, it's, I mean, is there a distance limit, or, I mean, it's, I understand the concept and agree with the concept, and just kind of wondering how we actually do this, if it's a great distance.
They give us these amazing legal terms that are super specific, like reasonable and not an undue burden and all of those kind of things, and then we all get to thumb wrestle around it. I will say, in my experience in numerous school districts, is that most school districts really go out of their way, even if, you know, let's say it's a 45-minute one-way, they'll say, hey, we'll meet you halfway, we'll drop the kid, we'll get, you know, because we really try to keep, in foster situations, but also in homeless situations, where there's a lot of uncertainty in that child's life, we try to keep the public school service consistent.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep. That's all for reports.
All right, moving on to public participation, do we have any employee representatives willing to speak tonight? It doesn't look like it.
Can I just, I don't think he's going to speak, but I just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate Mr. Gary Foster, who is here with us this evening, he is the new President of OPEC 175, and doing a great job.
Yep.
Appreciate you being here, just wanted to acknowledge him.
Yeah. Any students wishing to speak? Parents are probably, we didn't have any, so.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Okay. Move on to approving the draft minutes from the regular meetings on March 17th, 2025, and the work session on April 17th, 2025, can I get a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Ms. Harrington?
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al-Wilson?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Board of Education items, and I believe we're going to do these individually, correct? So, I'll need a motion to approve the OPEC 175 MOU.
So moved.
Second.
Did you want to say anything about this?
Yeah, in terms of discussion, just to give it a little context, I approached, as you'll see both unions, and so I'll say the same thing next, but when I approached Mr. Foster and the Vice President, just asked them if they would be willing to talk to their membership, given the financial state that we're in, to consider what's calling rolling their contract. OPEC 175 was up for contract negotiations this spring, and, which is their right to engage in contracts with the admin, engage in negotiations with the administration, which we would do under normal circumstances. A rollover means we keep all language and we keep just basically everything the same as it is now, meaning there would not, it would basically be a pay freeze outside of steps. And they met with their, had a great conversation with Mr. Foster and his Vice President, they met with their membership, and their membership voted to approve this MOU, which is before you this evening, which would be a pay freeze for OPEC 175.
So, just to be clear, no base salary increase, correct?
No base salary increase, and then, what it states is, you know, there's obviously language in that MOU, and then, we would engage, assuming once we're able to stabilize our budget, then we will engage in good faith negotiations with Mr. Foster and OPEC 175 next year.
And I know you already touched on it, but the teachers and FEA agreed to the same thing, it'll be the next consent item?
It'll be your next consent item, yes, I talked to President Dittman and Co-President Baisada, and again, same thing, talked through a similar rollover, they were up for negotiations as well, they met with their membership, they had a vote, and their union also voted to ratify a rollover, which would be the same thing that you just said, Mr. Cooper, and then we will negotiate in good faith, once we stabilize our budget next spring.
I didn't want you to have to say it.
Say it again, even though I said it again, yeah. Okay, that's A, and then that's B.
Yeah, so, we mixed the two a little bit, so my apologies, but.
That's fine, they're separate votes, it's fine.
Just in my part of the discussion, Mr. Foster, I appreciate everything that you're doing and appreciate OPEC 175 doing what they did for the district, and also for the next one, even though I'm not supposed to mix them, to the teachers of the district, super appreciative for that, I know it's a tough thing to do, but under the circumstances, definitely appreciate it, so. Any other discussion? Ms. Harrington?
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al-Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
And then, as Dr. Hatton said, we'll move on to B, which is the FEA MOU, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Make a second.
Second.
Any discussion besides Dr. Hatton and myself?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Aldridge, or Ms. Eldridge, Mrs. Iyer, my lord!
[laughing]
Ms. Iyer?
Obstain.
Dr. Stephen Al-Wilson?
Aye.
I kept, I was trying to get your wife here, Mr. Aldridge.
One of the things, before we go on to item C, before we go on to item C in the consent items, I want to concur with the level of gratitude towards OPEC 175 and FEA in this difficult time, those that are residents, should this, you know, we be successful on May 6th, it will not be forgotten that this moment, but also, that, you know, the 1% earned income tax is going to impact those that are residents of our school district that also work and serve here. It will, I don't think it takes an MOU or an MOA, but I'm also going to recommend to the Board of Education that because of these steps taken by our union members, that it is in kind, it is the same level of pay frees for administrators in the district, I just wanted to make that recommendation to the Board officially, so.
Appreciate that, Dr. Hatton.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, approve the 2025-2026 preschool start and end times, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
The only thing I would add here on this one, and I guess I'll look at Mrs. Abbott, these times, similar to the preschool colleagues in K through 12, these times will work next year, even with the different options or iterations that we might have with transportation. Okay, that's correct, thank you.
That's it. We will go slow. Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al-Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Glad I got that out right, my goodness.
All right, moving on to D, approve international travel proposal, can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Did you want to talk about?
Yeah, just, as you know, out of state or out of country, travel just needs to come before the Board of Education. You approved a trip about this time last year to Peru, and that'll be taking place this summer. EF Travel is one of the best in the business, EF Tours, Educational Tourism, we have another amazing high school faculty member that is willing to lead an international experience to enhance global competency for our students, this is 100% self-funded by families, so it's one of those truly extracurricular, obviously, there's a lot of curricular connections, but this is an extracurricular opportunity for students, and I would, I would hope that this would get supported.
Any discussion? Ms. Harrington?
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al-Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and HR consent items, I know, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I know you wanted to touch on it.
Yeah, so there's discussion.
Yep.
Obviously, as we do at this time, I just want to honor and recognize the folks that have served our district so diligently for so many, like, accumulative decades, like I said the other day, when I took the office hours out into Panera, and I sat down and heard just so many fond memories and stories of our teachers and our support staff, and they are just so proud of Finley City Schools. There is one, and I'm sure she's going to, I'm going to be in trouble for this, but I did want to give a shout out and an acknowledgement to Mrs. Stephanie Renn for her 33 years of dedicated service. When I got here and we, you know, some change had taken place, and we had a few meetings and sat down, and I've been a Student Services Director, and I have a lot of big ideas, and sometimes I can overwhelm people with my big ideas, so I draw on the whiteboards, and then we try to make them all nice and neat, and because Stephanie is very, like, neat and orderly, and my brain doesn't work that way, and she's like, let's get this into a spreadsheet, and I'm like, fine, and so then, we started kind of collaboratively working on, because Student Services is a position that there are, because one of the things, and the reason I'm spending just a moment on this, if it's okay, is that one of the things we've been asked to do is to continue to clarify what we do in public school, especially as administrators, and what, you know, when people see Student Services, they don't understand maybe what that is. In some districts, it's actually special education. But the way we've designed, and Stephanie really helped me with this, and I just have such a debt of gratitude, she does our continuous improvement plan, the CCIP with the state, which is a huge lift and keeps us not only in compliance, but makes sure that federal and state dollars are flowing to our students in the classroom. That's Stephanie Renn. She helps run point on our Welcome Center, which has just been enhanced so much over the last 24 to 36 months, welcoming every student, and if you could have seen, not only our Welcome Center, but even, you know, kindergarten register, like, we have the world walking through our door right now to enroll in Finley City Schools. Homeless Liaison, as you heard earlier, foster care, as you may not know, runs point on our school counselors, our nurses, PBIS, the services, they don't fit neatly into HR or teaching and learning or special education, or name your other technology, without this position, there are so many students that would be negatively impacted, and I just want to say, at least for the last 18 months to two years that I've been serving with you, I just want to thank you so much for everything you have done for Finley City Schools. Thank you. That's it.
Any board discussion?
I've got, I've got just a couple items too, I'd like to highlight two, as you said, just the service years, you look at Mrs. Hyatt with 33 years, and Mrs. Kennedy Maori with 26 years, and again, Mrs. Renn with 33 years. The service that each one of these individuals have given to Finley City Schools is just incredible, and I want to thank them for their work and their service, and you've truly, you all have truly made a positive impact to Finley City Schools and to the students and to the community, so thank you. That is all.
Any other discussion? We'll roll.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al-Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning consent items, and I get a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
The main highlight that you'll see under this one is the first of the summer work appears here for preschool play-based assessments. Mrs. Abbott, anything else to add to that?
As our students turn three, we have to engage in play-based assessment by EZTRs, and they turn three over this summer, so we need to make sure that that work is happening and that our teachers and our related service providers, school psychologists are compensated.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Stephen Al-Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Treasure CFO, financial.
Now, the most riveting part of the evening, so.
Here we go.
Now, I did have, I'm not sure if Mr. Shank is still back there, but we did offer a few things on the slide so that people in the audience can see a few things, because we can see them on our papers up here, and you can always refer to Board Docs to see the whole packet. So, at our meeting, we had a, we have a, we get together once a month, sometimes twice, three times, but this month, just once, we go over our cash reconciliation, I'm not going to read it to you, because you can, you can actually look at it and read it, but it is out there for you to review. We do a fund balance report, which is my, I do like the fund balance report myself, because I do think it's the best in regards to giving you an overview of every single account that we have, and some of the information that's on it does spark some questions every once in a while. I'll get a question from not only board members, but some people from the public, so always makes me feel good that people are actually looking at it, because it's an interesting, it's a nice report that kind of gives you an overview of everything, and on our meeting, we don't go line by line, but a lot of times, we do review it and go through specific lines that change quite a bit. Our next item is our fund balance, our general fund balance report, which is what we kind of, I gauge most of my attention on, seeing as it's our, technically, it's our five-year forecast, and it's been my budget, my worksheet, my everything, so it's where I gauge, I run it every Friday, but I only put it, we only distribute it once a month, and it's, again, a report that shows you where we are, so we can gauge how we're doing throughout the year, you know, you achieve what you measure, so we have to constantly measure where we are financially. Our health insurance report, we are keeping a very watchful eye on, because, you know, we have a, it's a large amount of money, but yet not for as many people as we have, and we do a very good job with my benefits coordinator, which is Tracy Broadman, who's who's been with the district thirty-seven years, does a fantastic job of reviewing everything and keeping us in line with what we're making sure we're paying things on time and, and in a proper manner and in timely fashion. And that report's also available out on this, everything's out there on the website. We do have some what we call internal controls. Every once in a while, we'll have an account that comes in that is just not in, you know, we, we didn't quite budget enough for, or we budgeted too much, and a different one will transfer them around. We also have occasionally, when we have something come in that we forgot to do a purchase order for, it happens. Not always, not very often, I would say Finley City Schools does a much better job than my other four districts did. They really do. Um, not just saying that, 'cause it's, you know, Treasury Month coming up, no, just kidding. So we did, we are working on, as you know, we are working on a third quarter budget book to be distributed in the next six to eight weeks. We're, we're getting close. We reviewed some of those items. Um, we do, at this time, we have our property, fleet, and liability insurance talks going on. We have a, uh, several companies put in some, some bids and tell, you know, we get some, we go out and make sure that we're on track with what we're paying for all of those things. Believe it or not, it's big business, you know, property, fleet, and insurance. Um, and, and every business is kind of a big, kind of a big deal. Our, our Build America bonds, we review those quite often, and right now, we are currently doing a deep dive into them, thinking about having R B C Kent Cashel maybe come in the next six weeks or so, do a review for us. Maybe won't do anything with them, but just, it never hurts to always check and see if we're on task for where, or if we're getting the best deal where we are right now with our bonds. Current legislation, um, I, you know, I, I wanted to encourage people to reach out to their, um, representatives, but again, um, right now, I, I hate to say it, maybe I'm just a little jaded, 'cause I've been doing this thirty-two years, but we probably really won't know for sure anything till June thirtieth at about eleven-thirty at night, so, but it never hurts to give our two, you know, our, our input. It's, I, I wanna encourage you that they're offering a thirty, twenty-five to thirty percent possible cash carryover for districts, um, all schools in Ohio, and I, again, that just shows that we need to do a little bit better job working with our people in Columbus because they don't understand that that won't work. It just won't work, because come December, when we have very low dollars because our tax dollars and our money does not come in every day and every month, we would not be able to meet payroll. So, again, I encourage you to do some research on it. Reach out to me if you have some questions or would like any research I've received. I did go to Columbus a couple weeks ago and listened to it quite a bit of the banterings, and I do feel that sometimes, you know, just some, hearing from some of us saying, look, I think you need to listen to the Treasures in the state of Ohio to get your, their opinion on that, um, would be helpful. So we, we talked about that a little bit, but, um, I'm not going to strong, strong-arm the board and say, each one of you write a letter right now, but if, if they want to write one, I'll certainly help them. Because I do think it, I do think it helps. Susan's our lia- Legislative Liaison, and she knows that sometimes just hearing from multiple people saying the same thing helps.
Yeah, and Pam and I have talked about this, and, and, um, writing your own letter is important, too. I mean, we might produce some talking points, but the more you can write it yourself, the more impact it has, 'cause if anyone, including us, if we receive the same letter, just signed by five different people, it's really one letter, okay? Um, so it, it's important to, to have your voice heard. In fact, we've already heard from, um, the group that we, we all belong to, the Ohio School Board Association, that the voices of the, of the public are already making an impact on the legislation decisions. So, so they, so your participation, your voice being heard is very important. It is tracked, and it is noted, and it is important. So please, please feel free to write, um, and make your voice heard. If you need help, we're more than happy to provide some talking points. If you want, you want some, um, some things to write around that you're not entirely sure, you don't keep up with it. There's a lot of bills floating through the Senate right now, a ton of legislation out there. Some of it is very scary, but probably not likely, okay? So we're not gonna get all upset over things that aren't likely. We're trying to track the things that are most likely to happen, and then follow through on those, and, and yes, please have your voice heard, keep track of what's going on in the legislature, because some of these things could have a big impact on public school funding in the future. Just fair school funding plan is fair for everyone. We would love it if they would just finish implementing what they're, they told us they were gonna do, and now they're kinda backing out of that. Fair school funding plan would be fair to everybody, so that's what we would really like to stress. And, um, but they're coming up all kinds of really creative ideas, and not always as creative good, so just keep that in mind. We'll keep you posted, though, if there's some things that we really want you to, uh, to help us focus on.
So I guess I should have a motion and then a second, and then I'll talk some more. Go ahead.
Can I have your motion to approve the Treasures financial items, please?
We got a little excited there, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, guys. It's just, in one of those days, I'm telling you.
You said it was the most exciting part.
Well, I was so, so excited. And so, one thing I do wanna stress, because I have, I've, it's, I, I will be careful about what I say about our future levy. You know, it's, it's always, I've always been very proud and honored to live in Finley. You know, I didn't always work here, but I was always so proud to say, I live in Finley, you know, I came here with Marathon Oil many, many moons ago, decided to leave that business and go into the schools because I saw what a great op- great, what a great environment, and we do such a good job. We have so many great teachers and administrators that care far more than they lead on because they just do their job and nobody notices, because they just do it with a smile every day. And so I'm, I'm very, I'm very hopeful and optimistic that our community is, we're gonna, we're gonna get this passed in a couple weeks, and we're gonna do some more great things in the future. That's it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Dr. Seaman-O'Wilson?
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment dismissal and compensation of employees.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Harrington?
Dr. Seaman-O'Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Mr. Aldridge?
Aye.